All right, you guys ready? Do I have a motion to exit executive session?
Make a motion to exit.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. McCall. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel B one through four? C one through four?
So moved.
Excellent.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mr. McCall. In favor? Unanimous. All right, that was a bit rough, and we're gonna do better going forward, guys. Welcome, good evening. If you can, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome everyone, good evening. First up on the program tonight is recognitions with Dr. Amy Bartlett.
Well, thank you Chairman Valdez. We are so excited to be here this evening for what is one of our favorite times of our board meeting, and that is the recognition portion. We'd like to begin this evening with some very special outstanding individuals to recognize. So let me just, I've been taking some copious notes here to make sure we gather the amazing accomplishments of our students and our communities. Tonight, we have several recognitions. I would like to begin by inviting Mrs. Heidi Avila to come forward to recognize our first honorees.
Good evening. I have the great pleasure tonight to present the Health Services Hero Award to a remarkable fifth grade student and a dedicated staff member from Brookwood Elementary School. Although our student Jadial Sabino Guzman cannot be here tonight, we are honored to recognize him for his exceptional quick thinking, courage, and composure that he showed during a medical emergency. A classmate began choking at lunch, and he immediately stepped in and started performing the Heimlich maneuver, taking swift and effective action truly saved a classmate's life. His bravery and his readiness to help reflects the very best of our school community, and we are incredibly proud to honor him this evening. We also want to recognize and honor our staff member who jumped right in, Mrs. Shelby Campbell. Your care and commitment to our students every day, it makes a tremendous difference, and we cannot thank you enough. I would also like to acknowledge the student who received the care and his family who are here with us tonight. Your gratitude reminds us how important the acts of courage and compassion are for others. Thank you so much for celebrating with us this evening. Mrs. Campbell, if you'll please come forward and accept the Health Services Hero Award. She'll also be accepting Jadial's award as well this evening. Thank you, let's give them a big round of applause. And at this time, Dr. Amy Bartlett to return for the rest of the recognitions.
Wonderful. Next, we are so proud to recognize a remarkable achievement from the 2025 International Science and Engineering Fair. We congratulate Pagathy Kattuni Akula for earning first place from South Forsyth High School in biochemistry, which is an outstanding accomplishment that reflects hard work, dedication, and passion for scientific discovery. Although Pagathy could not join us this evening, we are honored to have her parents, Ajay Kasani and Aparna Akula, here to accept this well-deserved recognition on her behalf. Please come forward and help me congratulate this very exciting accomplishment. Grandpa, come on down too. Congratulations, you're gonna come down and be recognized by our entire Board of Education. Congratulations. And I see proud principal, Mrs. Bibic, as well. Great accomplishment for your school. Next, we'll move to the north end of our county where we would like to congratulate North Forsyth High School's Peer Mediation Team Purple, who recently were named one of the winners in the 2025 International Online Peer Mediation Tournament. Led by Counselor Dr. Boone Benton, their team was recognized for outstanding communication, conflict resolution, and collaboration skills, standing out among schools from all across the United States and the world. If you're a member of this team, please come forward to be recognized by our Board of Education, and congratulations to the North High community as well as Principal McAllister. We'll now move on to a very special recognition, our Employee of the Month. This month, we are so proud to recognize Mrs. Rhonda Woodall, who has been named Employee of the Month. Mrs. Woodall helped open the doors at Silver City Elementary and served as the receptionist for six years before moving to her current position as bookkeeper. In the nominations, her staff let us know that Rhonda is the absolute heart of Silver City Elementary and known to many as Mama. She's kind, patient, and always ready to help with a smile. Ms. Rhonda is a beacon of light at our school. She is there to listen and solve problems. She has great relationships with every staff members and always makes it a point to ask about their day, their family, and life in general. Ms. Rhonda is the sweetest woman and very intentional in getting to know you personally. When I started at Silver City, she made sure to learn my name and speak to me every time she saw me. If there is ever a question, you can go to Ms. Rhonda, and she will help you figure it out, even if she's not the person to handle it. But to be honest, there's nothing she can't do. Another staff member writes, "Ms. Rhonda has been at Silver City since it opened. I remember when I was at Silver City as a student. Ms. Rhonda was always so sweet and cared about everyone. Now I'm back as a teacher, and nothing has changed." You can go to Ms. Rhonda with any question, and she will help you. She always makes a point to ask you how you're doing every day. Another teacher writes, "Ms. Rhonda is a true gem, and if I could click every option of the learner profile, she exemplifies them all. She makes sure we are all in the know and ensures her office is a safe space for everyone. We appreciate her so much." It's not surprising that she has earned this distinction for our county this month. Rhonda builds strong relationships, keeps everything running smoothly, and makes everyone feel valued and cared for. As she prepares for retirement, we just wanna say, "Thank you, Rhonda, for all the love, laughter, and dedication." Come on up and be recognized, Rhonda. Hey Mama. Thank you. Congratulations, congratulations. Come, come. Oh, there's one. Now, I'd like to turn the floor over to Dr. Michelle Dugan to present our alumni spotlight.
Good evening, board members, and hello to everybody who's joined us. I have the honor to share a little bit of a highlight of our fantastic alumni. And I'm just curious, because I know that we certainly have some veteran alumni in the house. Will you please raise your hand if you are an alumni of Forsyth County Schools? We've got a few in the audience, which is exciting, and on the board, which is exciting. I'm raising my hand as well? That's correct. So, Mr. Grimes and I had a little bit of a differing opinion, North versus South, back in the day. But I'm a pro-graduate of North Forsyth. We like to highlight our alumni, no matter where they are in their careers, college, what they've done. And this month feels particularly appropriate because we are highlighting somebody who had incredible legacy and impact in Forsyth County Schools. It's especially appropriate because we honor our retired educators this month. So our alumni highlight for the month is Mr. Joey Perkel. I have the honor, you guys know Joey? Yeah, Mr. Joey. I had the honor of hearing Mr. Perkel share some words earlier today, and he was reminding some of our, you know, newer leaders and aspiring leaders about why the work we do is important. And he just said, "Remember who you are, remember why you do this work, and you can never go wrong." And that just resonated so much with his legacy. So, I will tell you, he has been in this game since 1986, I believe. This is a short snippet of his journey, but if you want the extended version, we can offer that as well. So I'll let Mr. Perkel tell you a little bit about his journey.
My name's Joey Perkel, and I graduated in nineteen-
And I'm gonna stop that, so we have the right-
-from Forsyth-
Here you go.
My name's Joey Perkel, and I graduated in 1980 from Forsyth County High School, which is now Forsyth Central High School. When I graduated from Forsyth County High School in 1980, I immediately went to college. I went to Reinhardt University in Waleska. Then it was only a two-year college, so I graduated from there with an Associate in Arts degree. I always knew that I wanted to be and thought I wanted to be a teacher in education, but I wasn't really sure, so kind of explored around. After working about a year and a half in the outside workforce, I said, "Yes, I definitely wanna be a teacher." So I then went from Reinhardt, and I went to University of North Georgia. And I graduated at University of North Georgia with a Bachelor in Education. After graduating in May at University of North Georgia, I was hired as a seventh grade science teacher at Iowa that summer, and started that August. So that was 1986 when I started teaching. It's really, it's kind of a funny story, I guess, but when I was a kid, probably elementary school, for sure, my cousins would come over, and we always planned school. And I always had to be the principal. They could be teachers or whatever they wanted to be, but I wanted to be the principal. So really, from a little kid, I really knew that I wanted to teach, but really, I really didn't even think then about teaching. My ultimate goal was to be a principal. That really came from a long, long way back. But then, when I got into teaching, I guess I really still wanted to be a principal, but didn't know exactly when and how that would come about. I had a principal when I was teaching at our middle school, Miss Judy Thornton. And she called me in her office one day and said, "I want you to go back, just go, I want you to get your master's degree, and then I want you to get your specialist degree." And I said, "Okay." And she said, "But I want you to get into leadership." And I said, "Oh, wow." So, you know, I said, "Really, I always wanted to be a principal, but I didn't know, I don't know that I'm ready for that." She said, "Oh, you're ready." You know, I never really, I never had a desire to go outside of Forsyth County to teach and to work. I was born here, grew up here. All my family, immediate family, born, grew up here. So I never even considered or thought about even going anywhere other than Forsyth County to teach. Well, I definitely firmly believe that you should have a goal, that you should have something in mind that you know what you want to do. I said earlier, I graduated with two years, a two-year degree at Reinhardt, not quite sure. But I went back to what I always thought I really wanted to do. So you can be anything, anything that you wanna be, if you wanna be. You can run this. A brain surgeon, a schoolteacher, a lawyer, a judge. If you wanna be that, then you can be it. It's not that you're not smart enough, or you don't have this to do it, or you don't have that to do it. You have everything there is to do it, if that's what you wanna do. But you gotta set the goal, and you gotta go and do it, and you gotta stick with it. Forsyth County Schools is absolutely phenomenal. I firmly believe that it's a wonderful school system. It serves me well. It's served a lot of children and a lot of families very well. Really, Forsyth County District is really unlike any other district. I believe that because we have maintained, or the school district has maintained, a small district field, even becoming a very large district. I don't think the Forsyth County School District ever lost the small family feel and lost the idea that we're family. Yeah. That's what Forsyth County Schools is.
So to our board and to our audience, just a few wise words from the famed Mr. Joey Perkel. But I'll charge all of you in here who are students, who are just figuring out those next steps. He shared with you to set a goal. And I'll also share to just find a mentor. And it's okay to ask for one, somebody who can help you reach those goals and get you to where you wanna be. But thank you, board members, for letting us share our alumni spotlight. Appreciate it.
Wonderful. Next, we welcome Dr. Megan Thompson, Principal of Lakeside Middle School, who will present our Superior Spotlight.
Thank you. Thank you. Hold up. It's hard to follow Joey Perkel, I will be honest. So, good evening to our thing, I just wanna say thank you to the board and to Dr. Young for inviting Lakeside Middle School to be the Superior Spotlight. My name is Megan Thompson, and I am the very, very proud principal of Lakeside Middle School, and I have been for the past six years. Tonight, we are honored to highlight the exceptional work of what is actually happening in our building. This work reflects the dedication of our students, the commitment of our staff, many of whom are sitting behind me, and the support of our families. In the day-to-day school life, it's so easy to get focused on what the challenges are and what might be going wrong. But tonight, we really wanna celebrate the accomplishments and the growth and the innovation that makes Lakeside a place that's vibrant and a place that people wanna learn, and they thrive. What you're gonna see today, it represents the collective effort of a community that's deeply, deeply invested in student success, academic achievement, and the well-being of every single student at Lakeside. We have four amazing eighth graders who are going to share about life at the lake.
Hi, my name is Marla Cooper-Smith, and I'm in eighth grade. At Lakeside, we live the lake life way. We have a school-wide expectation that can be seen on our matrix system defining leadership, attitude, kindness, and effort. The matrix helps our students feel safe and connected at school. We have a positive reward system called PBIS. We can earn points from teachers for demonstrating the Lake Life Matrix System. Students are able to cash in those points at the store that we call the bait shop. At the bait shop, students can purchase fun and exciting items, such as toys, candy, games, crafts, and many more. Students also can enter raffles that they can earn bigger prizes, like Legos, a Kindle, or even AirPods. Student Council helps run the bait shop by restocking inventory and when students cash in points for their prizes. Another way we are recognizing students for demonstrating the Lake Life Way is once a month through Student of the Month. Teachers nominate students for having one of the four Lake Life Expectations. For example, I was recognized in October for showing effort, and it has encouraged me to continue to do well. We also recognize teachers and staff each month. PBIS keeps us connected because everyone works towards the same goal and encourages each other to do our best. It also helps us thrive because we know what's expected and we feel supported by our teachers. And we are rewarded for our good deeds. It makes school a place where we all want to do our best and help each other succeed. It feels good to be recognized for doing the right thing and being part of a positive, safe school community.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tetra Oko, and I'm a student here at Lake, I'm an eighth grade student here at Lakeside. One of the ways Lakeside thrives is through our program called Sources of Strength. Each year, our favorite campaign to do is called the You Belong Campaign. We love this campaign because we believe everyone deserves to feel accepted and valued here at Lakeside. Belonging is one of the most important things that we can share as a community. Did you know that Lakeside is home to students from thirty-five different countries? And our families speak more than thirty different languages? One way we celebrate this diversity is through the You Belong map activity. This map can be found as you enter the new addition to our school as shown on the board. On this map, students and staff place a star on the map to show where they were born. In fact, nineteen percent of our student population was born outside of the United States. It is inspiring to see how many students bring experiences from places far beyond Georgia and the US. Another way we highlight our students' background is through an activity called Homeroom Highlight. Each home shares where they were born, their languages they speak, their favorite books, healthy activities, and traditions from their culture. Through this activity, students gain a deeper understanding of each other. Our school's diversity is a strength and something that we truly love to celebrate here at Lakeside. An example of this was me. I was born in Great Britain, and I love this campaign specifically because it helps me feel like I belong. I know that many other students here in the Lakeside community feel the same way. Because of our diversity and unity, Lakeside continues to be a place where students can grow and thrive.
Good evening. I am Arish Thadakamala in the eighth grade. At Lakeside Middle School, some initiatives we take include connecting students to students and students to adults. We offer opportunities through Do Be Nice Week and PBIS Reward Comments. But what is Do Be Nice Week? Do Be Nice Week is a week of celebrating kindness around our school, and we have it twice a year to encourage connectivity and kindness. An example of connectivity between our students to adults is Munchkin Monday. Munchkin Monday is during the Do Be Nice Week, in which students can give munchkins to their favorite trusted adults/staff in our school building. An example, another, another example from connecting students to students is also during Do Be Nice Week in the activity called Random Acts of Kindness. The activity allows students to write down other peers' random acts of kindness. And the Lakeside News raffles these papers to shout out the great people of our school. Some other examples are shown on the screen, such as Be the Eye in Kind and Lakeside Shout Out, which are other ways to connect our school together. These initiatives that our school has provided has personally affected me. They have affected me by providing ways to stay positive while I'm at school. I enjoy reading my teacher's PBIS Reward comments, and I had fun gifting my math teacher, Mr. D, with some munchkins last week during the Do Be Nice Week. These all have helped me grow my compassion and connectivity around our school. Overall, the message from this segment is that Lakeside Middle School connects our students and staff by sharing the positivity between them and how they can thrive together.
Good evening, board. I'm Michael Hannah, and I'm an eighth grader at Lakeside Middle School. Today, I'm here to talk to you about how students at Lakeside can feel safe, seen, supported, and especially connected. But first, I have a question for you. Have you ever felt that you've wanted or needed someone in your life who would make you feel safe, supported, connected even? Someone who'll keep you moving through all the ups and downs you have in life? Twice a year at Lakeside, we do a questionnaire that asks students what they think would make Lakeside a better place, who their trusted adult is at Lakeside, and what they do both inside and outside of school. Studies show that students who have a trusted adult have better mental health and stronger coping skills. Having a trusted adult can make a huge difference in how students can feel safe and supported. We are proud to say that out of the almost fifteen hundred students we have at Lakeside Middle School, ninety-four percent of them say they have at least one trusted adult. I personally, or we hope to make that number up to a hundred percent because every student deserves to be seen, supported, connected, and safe. I personally am Egyptian, and I do speak Arabic, and I've always felt connected at Lakeside. One of the trusted adults I have at Lakeside is Coach Hall, as you can see on the screen. He's always helped me feel connected and safe at Lakeside, and he's one of many of the amazing staff members and football coaches we have at Lakeside. He will help me with anything I can need, whether it be a quiz, or a test, or even my football plays that I have. I'm a football player, and I've always felt connected on the football field. And it's always been an environment that I've thrived in. If you take anything away from today, it's, I hope it's this. At Lakeside Middle School, we ensure that all our students can feel connected, safe, seen, supported, and thrive in a place that they can call home. We make sure that everyone is heard and that truly no man is left behind. We make sure that all fifteen hundred students have someone that they believe is a trusted adult, and someone that can keep them going through all the ups and downs, the highs and the lows, the challenges, and all the hardships that come in life. Thank you.
First of all, they are amazing eighth grade students who were brave enough to volunteer to do this. Voluntold, they're voluntold. But at Lakeside, we pride ourselves on our community and our connection. And we are the largest middle school in Forsyth County, and we work every single day to make sure that it still feels small and that it's a place that everyone feels welcomed and supported. Lake Life, which they just spoke to you about, is an umbrella to all of the amazing programs that we have, such as PBIS, Sources of Strength, Wellness, and all of our connection activities. Our students are not just safe, but we're also connected, and we're always thriving. At Lakeside, we believe that if we continue to lift each other up, we'll all succeed together, and that is why life is better at the lake. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. All right. This concludes our recognitions for the evening. Next up is the business portion of the agenda, which is riveting. But if you would like to go home, now is a fantastic time to make like Michael Jackson and beat it, because we're gonna take a short recess. Thank you. But if you would like to go home, now is a fantastic time to make like Michael Jackson and beat it because uh, we're gonna take a short recess. Thank you. Always. Since nineteen eighty-six. Thank you guys for returning. Appreciate it. All right. Now that our colleagues have decided to return to the dais, we'll go ahead and continue with the evening's business. You okay there, Dr.? All right, next on the agenda, public participation and agenda items. I believe we do not have anyone. Is that correct? Okey dokey. Next up is the consent agenda. Has everybody received the documents in question? All right, yes. Is that a yes, Mrs. Hoyes? Oh, good. I'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second, for discussion.
Any discussion? Oh.
Um, I just wanna say, especially on items number, or letter A and B.
They don't have the agenda.
Um, they will.
You gotta read it to them.
Um, for the school bus radio purchase and the fuel IGA that we're approving tonight. I think those are great examples where we've been able to work with the county and utilize infrastructure that, where we've been able to, for the radio system, not have to put in our own, um, build out our own radio system that we were able to partner with them. And the same thing with the fuel, where we are not gonna have to build a new fuel station and we can utilize and work with the county. Um, really to save money and even also wear and tear on our buses, uh, for that one, just to, for them to get fuel.
No, and I'm, I'm gonna shout Michael Satterfield out of that. He, he really was the driving force, putting that agreement together with, with our partners at the county. Um, and the, the distance our buses were driving, right, Michael, to, to get refueled every day, that's gonna cut that down significantly. We're gonna see a major cost savings to that. Uh, and it, and again, as you said, it, it, it highlights a good partnership with our, with our friends at the county.
So they'll be using our fuel stations and, we'll be using their fuel stations, they'll be using our propane stations. All right, anybody else? All right, all in favor? Unanimous. Next up is presentation and discussion items. Uh, I'd like to welcome Mr. McCall and Ms. Pluhar for Homeless Awareness Month.
I'm gonna stay here. You think I should go down there with? Go ahead.
Hi, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Kim Pluhar. I'm the McKenney Vento Liaison with the schools. This is my eleventh year in the role. And it is an honor to serve our six hundred and seventy-one students who qualified for the program so far this year. So I wanna give a quick overview of the McKenney Vento Act in sixty seconds. I'm gonna talk fast. Number one, the duties of a liaison are to identify homeless children in youth. We start annually in July and we move till the last day of school. Immediate enrollment was in twenty-four hours of registration, closing academic gaps, removing barriers to full participation. Collaboration with comparable services like special education, IDEA, um, Title III, migrant education, et cetera. Informing and involving parents and guardians and caregivers and making them aware of their rights under the McKenney Vento Act. Awareness about the McKenney Vento Program, dispute resolution, transportation to school of origin, training and technical assistance, and supporting unaccompanied homeless youth. When I use "we" throughout this presentation, there is one liaison in the county, but we are a network of support. We are all connected and we make students thrive, so thank you for your partnership. So definitions and differences. One of the biggest confusion points comes with the three different federal programs that support homeless, homeless families in the US. McKenney Vento is the educational act. It is the broadest definition of homelessness. The HUD definition is the most restrictive and runaway and homeless youth is right in the middle. So unsheltered McKenney Vento, HUD, and runaway and homeless, all support. Doubled up, McKenney Vento only due to economic hardship. It's not multi-generational living. HUD, absolutely not. And then runaway and homeless, yes. Shelters, all of them support. Hotels and motels, McKenney Vento, if it's due to a lack of alternative affordable housing, yes. It had, yes and no. It depends on who's paying and how long you've been there. It's a little bit more restrictive. And then if it's runaway and homeless, if it's due to a runaway situation, then yes. Risk of homelessness, we can't support that. It's not until you actually become homeless that we can support McKenney Vento. I'll put a calendar invite on my calendar when I find out somebody's being evicted to follow up on the date of the eviction, to see how we can support them. And then HUD definitions, yes. And then runaway and homeless, yes. This is a quick review I wanted to give you just to show you a me- um, a mega trend. The average service and retail worker weekly earnings in the US is seven hundred dollars a week. Please keep that number in mind because it's gonna be important in the next slide. Economic factors, the inflation rate, that does not include the commodity prices, which include gas, food, medical care, college education, and rent. This is the forward view of what they expect a year out. I just wanted to show that to you, to give you a macro frame, to look at the micro in our county. Uh, we have a local qualitative sample here from our Holiday House referrals and eligibilities. Seventy percent of the families reported a decrease in their weekly, in their weekly earnings. Over, over fifty percent of our families who qualified reported earning three hundred, three hundred and fifty, or four hundred dollars a week. That's down from six hundred to seven hundred dollars in previous years. Ten percent of the families who we talked to in that sample size have experienced layoffs. The Department of Labor in August reported that it takes twenty-four point five weeks to get a job right now. That was definitely heard in the families that we spoke with at the qualifying event. So longitudinal data and current data for McKenney Vento numbers, we're not at six sixty-two anymore this year. We're at six seventy-one with around sixty-one students who qualified as unaccompanied homeless youth at this point in time. This gives you an overview of how many students we've qualified from two thousand nineteen forward. And then the unaccompanied homeless youth are the bottom line there, so that you can see we're about ten percent usually of our numbers for McKenney Vento and unaccompanied homeless youth. Unaccompanied being not in the presence of your legal parent or guardian, homeless, not having a fixed adequate and or regular nighttime housing, and youth, any student who's in the school system qualifies. Here is a pie chart of our different categorical eligibilities. Here's where we present a little bit more rural than suburban in that we have eighty-seven percent of our families who qualified is doubled up. We have about two percent in shelters. We only have really one true shelter in Forsyth County. That's Family Haven for domestic violence. Family Promise also qualifies for me and my accounting and purposes is a shelter, although it's not officially a shelter in the county because it's a rotational program. We have about thirty beds in those two programs for families experiencing emergency needs. Hotels and motels around six percent. Hotel hopping is a trend that we're having right now where families can't afford more than one week in a hotel at a time. They're going on hotels.com and they are moving quickly. They're moving fast. They're at one hotel in Forsyth, they're over in Duluth, then they're over in Lawrenceville, and then they're over in Dawsonville, and they're back in Forsyth. They're looking for the best rate per night. Some of them are sleeping in their cars in between because they can't afford a hotel at night.
And with the McKenney Vento, we have to provide transportation.
We provide transportation when we know that they're moving. A lot of families are hiding that from us because of the fact they're afraid of getting in trouble. So it's building trust and raising awareness, one of the duties of a liaison. And then the unsheltered numbers are up by two percent. That has to do with pop-up RVs and families living on family land. That's a trend that we're watching and it's concerning. Okay, programs and activities. I'm gonna talk through this slide really, really fast. So we get funding from two sources in the McKenney Vento world. The title one, homeless set aside, which had a haircut this year, and then the McKenney Vento grant, which is a competitive grant in the state of Georgia through McKenney Vento. That is discretionary funding. We're forward funded and we have funding this year. In red, you see the programs that may be cut in the future. So McKenney Vento's summer hours, we have office hours that extend a week in June and then open about two weeks early in July because homelessness doesn't end just because the school year ends. We also have summer social workers who support with contracted hours throughout the summer. McKenney Vento tutoring, last year we had a hundred and ten students tutored out of two hundred. This year, we have fifty-seven students tutored out of a hundred and twelve identified so far. Community nonprofit referrals, two hundred fifty-four. McKenney Vento transportation requests, thank you Mike Satterfield, sixty-five. Enter county transportation requests, ten. School of Origin support provided, three hundred fifty-two. Parent and family engagement materials, thank you Mike Valdez, Plou, and Wes for helping with backpacks last year when they were a hot commodity and we could not keep them on the shelves. And that was in supplement to the funds we already had set aside. We also help with parent and family engagement materials to help address ac- targeted academic needs for students who may not be tutored. For example, we had to do a unilateral cut of kindergarten students last year. So we had parent and family engagement materials along with adult staff who would teach the students how to use those materials and take them home. And then summer learning materials. We had about one thousand two hundred seventy-one supports through parent and family engagement. Then health department vouchers, thank you Heidi, she's back there in the back, and our school-based health clinic. We had around four hundred and fifty of those referrals last year. Benefits letters to help families access, um, medical benefits for the state, twenty-six letters verifying their homeless status. McKenney Vento technical assistance is around seven thousand last year, and then MV coaching. We have a, one targeted McKenney Vento coach who's resiliency trained. She is a social worker and she also helps support our homeless youth. She tutor, she tutors, she mentors and coaches seventy-two unaccompanied homeless or youth per semester, and then she had two hundred and seventy-nine of her caseload for one-on-one, face-to-face, multiple hours a week. Okay, it's homeless awareness month. We gotta do a quick myth buster. Homelessness is a choice. That is something I've heard for eleven years in homeless education. Homelessness is not a choice. The reality is that many families face life happens moments that lead to homelessness. Job loss, we saw that in our little qualitative snapshot in the county. Um, unexpected medical expenses, a dad falls off the ladder while he's working, a mom has an unexpected medical event and is hospitalized, and then you're behind on your ability to pay your rent that month and homelessness is a very real factor. Domestic violence is on the uptick. You heard the social workers present last month, uh, last week and they talked about the economic referrals and the increase in domestic violence. And then just not earning enough. On that note, we've got the National Low Income Housing website. They report that the average fair market for a one-bedroom is one thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars a month. In order to maintain that and attain that, someone working at minimum wage would need to work a hundred and forty-four hours a week to be able to get that housing. That is up by four hours from last year to this year. I just wanted to bring that to your attention and on that note, we're gonna go ahead and talk to Wes who was able to come and throw a board resolution and found the Homeless Youth Council to address some of these challenges.
And I'm not gonna go that fast. I wanna first start by saying thank you and recognition to Ms. Pluhar. Uh, Ms. Pluhar lives and breathes this every single day. And the workload that you have and the passion you have is not matched anywhere else. And we are so grateful to have you, uh, be part of this. And then second, really is the staff behind you that supports you and that's involved. And last week, we listened to the social workers and it's a huge, um, organization put together with a lot of great people. And then the board members, you know, Mr. Valdez and his wife and Mr. Grimes and Mrs. Hoyes. Mrs. Hoyes is huge with the foster programs in, in the community and, and it's just, our community is special because of all the leaders that have a heart for this. So I just wanna recognize that and say thank you for that. Uh, we started the Homeless Youth Council in, I couldn't believe this when we saw this, twenty twenty, that's five years ago. We started this, uh, as a resolution through the Forsyth County School Board. And our goal was to take all the resources we had and focus on the homelessness in, in Forsyth County, especially among the youth. We have a lot of great organizations, but nobody solely focuses on the youth, so we started that conversation. And that was really the purpose behind this, uh, five years ago. And there's a couple of purposes that we've, we've built pillars, we've accomplished everything. Every, every year, we accomplish our pillars. Uh, but we look, we looked at the data around homelessness. There is not a source out there that actually collects the data every year. HUD attempts to do it, the state attempts to do it, but the school system through the McKenney Vento program is our source of truth. They do it every year. They're out there with the students. They know it's, it's our source of truth. Uh, increased collaboration, like I said, with our partners. I'll talk a little bit about some of our partners here in a minute. But we have taken all the organizations in the county and brought them together and we had this conversation about the homelessness and the youth programs in the, in the county. Every other month, we can meet. And then, uh, we identified gaps in services and resources and we found them. And we developed them and we developed those solutions and then support the MV eligibility, homeless children, youth, and their families and unaccompanied youth. So we give the support. Uh, last year, go ahead. I think it was last year, we, okay. Uh, last year, we did a resolution to recognize November as Homeless Youth Month, so that's why we're kinda bringing this to you. Uh, you saw some of the numbers that they've kinda gone down, which is good, but the needs are greater, right? The, the, there's more people that need bigger needs than before. Uh, so we kinda look back at our, our twenty-five action steps and steps to mitigate the MV attendance gap. Uh, if you look here, that we have a attendance rate, just for our homeless youth, is ninety-three percent. So the goal is to have the kids go to school. If the kids can get to school, stay in school, and graduate, that's the foundation we want for all of them. And, uh, so if you look at the state average, it's eighty-eight and, and our school system's at ninety-three this year, so great job with that. Uh, transportation requests, great support from the transportation team. Uh, expand early learning footprint, uh, with Spark, Sprout, uh, the preschool, Head Start, and CAPS, right?
Yeah, we had fifty students that we could identify. We can't count all of our Head Start students and we can't count all of our CAPS students, but we have fifty students between Spark and Community-Based Education in the East Forsyth Preschool, which is a great win and gain.
And the mentor program. Uh, we had, uh, over six hundred kids in a mentor program. We have one mentor coach that goes and tries to seize all these students. Well, what we've been able to do through our partnerships is open this up through Mentor Me North Georgia and they have created a resiliency mentor program. And so they are trying to come in and work with these students to allow the coach that we have focus on the unaccompanied youth a little bit more often. And, uh, they've been a great, their numbers have increased. I think we started around, uh, when we first launched it, it was like eleven to fifteen of the students. Now we're over sixty students that are being mentored every day. They have an adult that's mentoring them through, helping them build their resiliency. So, uh, that's been a huge, uh, newcomer support, uh, you know, making sure that the people coming in have ongoing support. And, um, and then communities and schools, yes, we have that and it's growing. And then support of fictive kin.
Fictive kin.
Fictive kin, you wanna talk a little bit about that?
So our fictive kin have to do with our unaccompanied homeless youth. Those are people who step in as caregivers who aren't in DFAX custody. The unaccompanied homeless youth program supports those youth and puts an extra layer and network of support. Mr. Grimes, you might be a little familiar with that program and they, these students may not always go into foster care, but we wanna make sure that those students are supported with extra layers of support. If we do need to make another report to DFAX, we can or that we're able to mitigate their needs through wraparound supports and services in our community.
And then last, we increased the CTAE participation. And we just listened to Lakeside and one of the students talked about the need for trusted adults. Well, you think about the CTAE teachers, their coaches, their mentors, their trusted adults. And if we can have these students engage in a career pathway with these amazing teachers we have in the county who just did a great job, uh, then that will help them graduate and then get them off to the career, so they'd be career-ready, right? Uh, so our goal is to increase that and, uh, we went from...
Twenty twenty-four, we had two hundred ninety-three MV students who participated in six hundred and forty-nine CTAE pathways. This year, in less than the first semester, we've already got two hundred and one students participating in four hundred and seventy-five CTAE pathway segments. So that is a huge win. When we look at our graduation data, last year, we had our largest graduation cohort of fifty-one McKenney Vento students. About fifty percent of those were going to higher ed, but the majority- to higher ed, but the majority of them that weren't had a pathway that they had followed and they felt workforce-ready and ready to enter the workforce and engage and earn. So that was a huge win and we're thankful for that partnership and collaborative educational support.
And we got one more year to improve it.
Yes.
From my last year, I'm going to focus on improving that.
So as far as McKenney Vento students' needs, obviously, school stability. Every single time a student moves, they regress six months or more. So when we look at school stability, it is extremely important that we wrap around supports to help the school of origin whenever possible in its best interest. We need to address academic gaps. We've had cuts in some of our tutoring, but we continue to look at innovative ways to address the academic gap so that our students can graduate on time and not get frustrated and quit on learning and that they're able to have success. Our tutors are amazing. They're highly qualified and they work with the students and the gains the students make over the course of a year are absolutely phenomenal.
Just real quick, on that note, just the funding, the federal funding. So a lot of this through McKenney Vento comes through federal funding and that funding has not been available this year. It's been cut at the federal level.
To the same extent. So this year, we had to make some really tough choices. Last year, we had to unilaterally cut kindergarten from McKenney Vento tutoring. This year, we had to cut back to 45 minutes twice a week instead of an hour twice a week. And we had to cut back on some of the student populations that we served. Again, we went from 112 that would have been eligible in October to 57 students that we could actually tutor. So that was a painful cut, but we're still moving on with tutoring. We've got great tutors who have pivoted with us and they're riding the wave of what we're facing. The other thing that is timely and trending when we look at networks of support, we're so thankful for our community partners. One of the challenges that came up last week when we had our first dip in temperatures were warming stations. I also helped facilitate the Metro Atlanta PLC for McKenney Vento liaisons out of 17 counties that have participated. We are the only county that currently doesn't have a warming station option. Last week, Dawson did open a church. It was reported, I've got two different sources that reported different numbers. Six of the eight, one reported, were from Forsyth County. The other report said that five of the six were from Forsyth County in the warming station. So that is something that we're looking at on the horizon to see if we can expand the warming centers to support our families who may be living in their cars or in other unsheltered situations. And then McKenney Vento Youth Wellness, we're thankful for the coaching. We're thankful for the mental health grant that we have to support those that are uninsured or may not have the means to have ongoing counseling and mental health supports, and then also the mentorship. So those are our four key priorities for McKenney Vento supports. And then we want to thank you. Thank you for your continued support of McKenney Vento students. Thank you for supporting our unaccompanied homeless youth who might not have somebody else shopping for them this holiday season. And what you do and what our leadership does in this county to support them is amazing and we're so thankful for that. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
And I never leave a meeting without action items. So we're going to get some action items out there. So the first one is a couple of our organizations that are part of the Homeless Youth Council. So the first one is Family Promise. Family Promise is hosting a breakfast, a pancake breakfast. So please go look up Family Promise and see if you can donate and maybe sponsor a pancake plate. So they're offering that in the next couple of weeks. The place of Forsyth, they need food. They need food in their pantry. They have several pantry locations. We need food. So if you have food and you want to donate, call me. I'll let you know. We'll kind of connect through that. And then Mentor Me North Georgia. Mentor Me has been a huge help, like I said, with the mentoring program. If you have any end-of-the-year funds or your corporation needs to, to release some funds and wants to donate, Mentor Me is coaching the homeless youth. And so they could really use that help. So, end on that. So thank you for your support.
And the place needs coats. Giving out coats with their Thanksgiving boxes next week and they're short. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, next up is the finance report with Mr. Larry Hamel.
Today, we're discussing October 2025 financial statements. As always, we keep gold five or Ford Gold five in mind when we talk about the financial statements. We started the month off with about $98 million. We ended with about 86. The amount of money, I'll talk about Avalorm tax in a minute, but the amount of money that came in was a little bit less than what we predicted coming in for this month. Our cash balance got down to 86 million, actually got closer down to 60-something million towards the end of the month. We did have a big drop right before, during Gaswell Conference last week for about $191 million. So we do have a large amount that's dropped. Typically, we collect almost 100% every year, but we're just a tiny bit behind in collecting funds for this year, for this time of the year. We're not sure what's going on. We think there's another big drop, getting ready to drop, but we're just waiting for Deborah Sexton and County Tax Commissioner to call us and tell us what that amount is. Revenue-wise, we're about $60, $171 million into collections at 22.66%. This time last year, we're about 23.99. Again, the main reason we're kind of behind is Avalorm collections mostly. As you can see here, our cash position is at 85 million, but our fund balance is down to $68 million. Again, a lot of that has to do with Avalorm not being collected as much through the month of October like it typically has been in the past. When we look at collections though, again, as compared to the budget, you'll see that usually there's a big spike in November and it caps off at about a 45-degree angle the rest of the year. And you can see how we're slightly behind through the month of October with actual collections this time of the year versus last year. Then when we look at a tabletop breakdown, you can see that, again, QBE usually is a large portion, but we did get in almost $28 million as well from Avalorm, which is about equal to what we got from QBE this month. Budget versus actuals, again, this kind of shows you how the budget itself is ahead of schedule. We're behind schedule with the actuals versus the budget amount. Again, it goes down to Avalorm tax not being as collected as much as it has been in prior previous years as well as this budget year. The budget itself, when we put the budget together, we have about 15 years of data when we put the budget together to look at cash flow purposes, and it shows that that's behind as well. But this budget here as well is based on that breakdown. When we look at it, we take that data as a percentage. We try to use the 15 years to get rid of any dips and valleys or mountains in the data to try to smooth it out. But on average, this year's been slower at collections or slower drops from the county than it's been in prior years. On the expense side, we're about $273 million at 37.05%. This time last year, we're at 34.82. I can, I'm going to explain this in a little more detail as we go into it. This has to do with some of the reserve funds that we've reserved out, that we've spent ahead of schedule. The Mashburn expansion, we sent about $14 million of the $19 million that we have reserved out in the last couple of months to the state of Georgia, excuse me, to the capital projects. And so that money's been spent out of reserves in this current year. We also spent some money for debt service, for the August payments. And there was one other amount. Let me tell you what that is. If I can find it. Splosts. We have some money that we spent for splosts for the buses because we're waiting to see how much of that's going to be reimbursed by the state of Georgia. So we went ahead and spent it out of the general fund for now. And once we figure out how much of that state reimbursed, we'll move some of that expense over to the splosts funds for the amount of money that we had budgeted in splosts six for buses. So some of that's in here as well. As you can see, we're way ahead of schedule. We have been every single month going forward. Again, part of that's we spent some reserve funds that you guys had allowed us to spend for the Mashburn extension as well as debt service. Breakdown-wise, destruction usually is the largest portion, but you can see student transportation, other outlays are big, other outlays being the amount of money we've transferred out this past month. Again, we're ahead of schedule versus our budget. And again, it has to do with the extra funds we spent through reserves. On the debt service cash analysis, it looks normal for this time of year. There's no big changes between year to year on that. We're at about $6.6 million for debt service. We're a little bit ahead of schedule in collections there. We're about 4.3 last year. And we're at only $10 million versus law six. We were about 27 last year. Again, we spent a lot of money this summer paying out the cluster we were in, and we're starting to rebuild that balance back up before next summer when we finish that cluster out. And then we'll be at the point where we'll spend most of our splosts funds by the time we finish splosts six at the end, unlike splosts four and five, which is kind of lingering around a little bit. Special revenue funds, normal for this time of year. Nothing significant going on there. On our capital projects and school for service, this time last year, we had about $22.5 million. We're at 18 million. So we're back up balance-wise where we need to be going into the next cluster for next year. And school nutrition was about 19.3. This time last year, we're 18.8. School, food services continues to do a good job of making sure they keep their costs clean and close to where it needs to be for each budget year. On the investment summary, as you can see, we're down to like a million dollars in general fund. That's how far we had to dip into LGIP funds this year because of the slow collections of Avalorm tax in terms of being sent to us. We were about 1.6 last year. It was also a slow year as well. Debt service, we had about $646. We had about 21K last year. School nutrition had about $16 million. They have $16 million this year. They had about 15.7. And of course, we only got $10 million in there and we had 27 million for splosts six. So in total, we had about $45 million compared to what the 27. Now, some interesting information for the last two collections for September, October. As you can see from the previous month, we're slightly below where they were on those collections, but we're ahead of last year in terms of changes, the 1.7 versus 7.1. I will say this, the amount we were predicting for these two months collections, on average, were about $700,000 less than we had predicted for the actual collections for the month of September and October. We think a lot of that has to do with the people cutting back on sales or buying items, knowing that the government was getting ready to shut down, and also during the month of October that was shut down as well. So a lot of sales weren't out there, probably from federal employees not having money, worrying about if they're going to have any money going forward, EBT cards shut down, also the economy slowed down a lot. So we've noticed this trend the last two months. And when you look at that compared to what actually was predicted for those two months, on average, we're about 12% below what we had predicted for these two months when we first put the splosts schedule together for splosts six, you know, almost four and a half years ago. So those two months concern me a little bit, but I think a lot of it has to do with people not spending money prior to the government shutdown and then the month of October of the government shutdown. When November comes around, we'll see what happens. I'll get you updated on that.
And Larry, and if, if that were to continue on, that just means we're not closing out splosts six as early as predicted, correct?
Correct. We're still only three months in advance. I don't think we'll get beyond the three months in advance. I think we'll stay there the whole way to the end. But something dramatic was to happen. There's always that chance we might go the whole way. And I just don't think it's going to happen at this point.
Okay.
We'll go into the next quarter.
We will, we won't, we will be able to collect 57 months instead of 60 months, basically, is what's going to happen. So right now, instead of ending, right now, it looks like it's going to end December of '26, instead of ending November of '26.
Well, if it continues.
No, I think we're good for December at this point. Looking at Dispersment Elementary, dispersments receipts are normal for this time of year. We have about $5.1 million in balances there. It was about $5 million last year. On the middle schools and also the high schools, the receipts and dispersments are normal for this time of the year. And middles have about 2.3. We had about 2.4. And the high school's a little bit higher than it was this, this time last year. We only had about $6.6 million in those accounts. Overall, we got $14 million. We had a little bit, slightly more than that last year, a little bit over $15 million. The balances haven't really changed. They're staying pretty much the same. The high school did go up about 2% versus the middle and high school, elementary's going down about 1%. And those are financials for October 2025. Any questions?
I do have a question. The Avalorm taxes that we didn't receive what we expected this month, is it because of an underperformance of the tax or is it because there's a delay in transmitting the funds?
So the pay date was November 17th. And typically, in the past, the first four years I was here, we would get a big drop sometime in October and another big drop in beginning of November. I don't know if it's because of the economy is going on or what's going on, but it seems like we're starting to get delayed by anywhere from two to three weeks now, where a lot of the companies that are escrow companies are really not dropping the money either until November 1st or to the middle of November, the 17th, when they're due. That's typically what we're seeing.
We do expect to receive that?
Yes, we are expected to see 100% of the funds like we've had the last couple of years. We're just not getting them as fast as we thought we were.
Might have to ask Wes for our loan.
I'll look into that.
We'll see what the bond rating is.
Jeremy Valdez, I would, I would also point out that normally there's a little bit of a glaze over the people's eyes sometimes during, but there's a three gentleman over his, his left shoulder that were only really tuned in to the financial part tonight. I don't know what that's all about, but that's, I just found it to be an interesting observation.
Thank you, Larry.
All right. All right, members. Next up is our action items. We have a number on the agenda tonight. I'd like to welcome up Dr. Josh Low to help us with three of those. First up is action item A, East Splosts election results resolution.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's tough to follow Ms. Pluhar and all the great work, but Larry's another tough one to follow. So I apologize.
It's the charts ever since he added them.
I will do my best, but on a serious note, we're obviously excited and grateful to our community for our recent passing of the East Splosts. Some quick data on that, 62.19% of voters said yes to East Splosts. It passed in every precinct in Forsyth County, and there was a 140% increase in voter turnout compared to the previous East Splosts referendum. This, this data is exciting. Obviously, this is continuation of the existing East Splosts tax, but this is the seventh consecutive cycle. So very grateful to Forsyth County voters and our community as a whole for supporting our district in this manner. With that said, we do have a resolution that I will read into the record on behalf of the board declaring the results of the election. So we will begin with, whereas the Board of Education of Forsyth County, from here forward, called the Board, which is charged with the duties of contracting dips and managing the affairs of Forsyth County School District, moving forward, called the School District, and the Forsyth County Board of Registrations and Elections, remaining called the Superintendent of Elections, which is the Superintendent of Elections of Forsyth County, called an election that was held on November 4th, 2025, for the purposes of submitting the, the qualified voters of Forsyth County, the question of whether or not a 1% sales and use tax for educational purposes should be reimposed. And whereas the returns of this election were duly brought up by the managers of such election as required by law and were presented to the Board of Education, pardon me, the Board, the Board and the Superintendent of Elections for consolidation and for the declaration of the result of the election. And whereas the results of the election were received from all poll officers and thereupon, the Superintendent of Elections canvassed, computed, and consolidated the returns of the election. And concurrent with the adoption of this resolution delivered a certified copy of the consolidated return to the election of the Board, and the result of the election was as follows. Total ballots cast, 31,049. Spoiled ballots, 12. Blank ballots cast, 179. Total number of votes for the reimposition of a 1% sales tax for educational purposes, 19,192. Total votes against the reimposition of a 1% sales tax, sales and use tax for educational purposes, 11,678. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Forsyth County and hereby resolved by the authority of the same that the election resulted in the favor of the reimposition of a 1% sales tax, sales and use tax for educational purposes by an affirmative vote of the majority of qualified voters in Forsyth County voting in the election held for such a purpose. And that that reimposition of the 1% sales and use tax for educational purposes has been authorized as required by law, and that the results of the election are hereby declared to be as set forth above. Be it further resolved by the authority aforesaid and, and it is hereby resolved by the authority of the same that a duly certified copy of the consolidated election return of the Superintendent of Elections is attached to this resolution as Exhibit A and made a part hereof.
And so I would recommend for approval the adoption of the resolution as read into the record by Dr. Josh Low.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I didn't ask for it yet, but it's okay.
Oh, man. He's in a hurry. Dr. Low, I just want to let you know, you actually didn't have to read that, but you seemed so motivated that I couldn't have the heart to stop you.
No, I was advised prior so by our superintendent, we would read it into the record so that it would be public record and, and online and so forth.
Is that what he did? Is that what he did?
I will just.
It's payback for your chair.
All right. A motion by Mr. McCall, a second by Mr. Grimes. Is there any discussion on the resolution? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Dr. Low. Next up, action item B, policy IBB charter schools with Dr. Low again.
And I will not read this to you, sir. However, this policy was presented last month. This is the changes as proposed by law. This last cycle is required, and this is with the green being what was given to us by our legal department and so forth, first proposed changes. And there's not been any questions or anything brought forth to my attention that would, that had been a concern. So, Dr. Young.
I recommend for approval, the changes to board policy IBB regarding charter schools.
All right. So these changes are just to reflect revisions in the law. It's sat public for 30 days, no comments. At this time, I'll seek a motion to approve policy changes to IBB charter schools.
Motion by Mrs. Hoy, second by Mr. Grimes. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Next up is action item C, 2027-2028 student calendar with Dr. Josh Low.
All right, the 27-28 calendar, what is presented tonight was what was shared last month. It is set for 30 days and with no additional feedback coming our way.
Okay, recommend for approval, the 27-28 student calendar.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the 2027-2028 student calendar?
Make a motion to adopt the calendar.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Mr. McCall. Any discussion?
I just got one question from Dr. Low. We expect the, same thing we've done last few years in May, that we'll have to adjust this calendar again.
Yes, at a future date, once we have further information on which weeks would be required for testing, we'll have to revisit this, that school year in 27-28.
And potentially graduation venue challenges.
That is a good point. We're currently in discussions with the dates that have been provided to us by the Infinite Energy Center in Gwinnett, or is quite frankly, earlier than we've ever had. So we're exploring if those are what we're going to be able to use, or if we need to find other venues that year. So we're currently, we've met about it this, actually today, discussing it further with Hannah Samples. And we plan to bring, you know, potentially adjust that as needed in a future year based off what we iron out graduation venue wise.
Anything else? All right, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Dr. Low.
I thank you.
Next up is action item D, policy BCBI, public participation in board meetings with Dr. Michelle Dugan.
Good evening again. We brought the public participation BCBI policy before you last month. This is the policy that governs the rules of conduct and public participation at the board meetings, along with our procedures for public participation. To date, we have not received any online feedback. I do want to acknowledge that we had one in-person feedback. But based on the culmination of evidence and totality of what we know, we are not recommending any changes at this time for the policy, which again, has sat for 30 days. And so at this time, Dr. Young, I'll ask that we make no changes to this policy.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, Jer. I recommend for approval, board policy BCBI be read adopted without change.
This policy sat public 30 days, no written feedback. It actually was revamped not very long ago, and it's pretty permissive. So with that, if there's a motion to adopt policy BCBI as presented.
I'll make a motion to adopt, second.
Motion by Mr. McCall, second by Mr. Grimes. Any discussion?
We also, the board has the ability to extend if we needed to.
We can. We have that discretion.
We both do. We're a pair of chairs.
Yes.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dugan. All right, next up is action item E, P25-13 system wide safety notification. I'd like to ask Mr. Mike Evans, Mr. Steve Hahn, and Mr. Brad Richardson to join us. From the back cave.
Good evening. I know you have a heavy docket tonight, so I appreciate the opportunity to make this request for acquisition because I'm excited about the acquisition itself. As you see in the agenda item, you know, this is the RFP that we put out for the system safety wide notification system to be compliant with the current Georgia law, pre-Kenelissa's law. We did release a RFP in September. We sent it to 14 known contractors. We posted on the Forsyth County website, as well as the state procurement registry. We received six responses, which were then parsed out to evaluation committee that was comprised of the technology, Mike Evans' technology team, Todd Shirley and Steve Hahn's security team formed a committee, had the privilege to facilitate that process. And I just want to commend the work that was done, the serious nature in which it was taken to evaluate an RFP of this size and scope, especially with the nature of it. That evaluation included searching references, talking to districts who've used these people, looking at their teams, looking at their years in service. It also included a in-depth dive into their methodology, the hardware, the software, the expertise that they bring, the type of technology that was offered through their, through each individual package. There were similarities, but there were certainly some distinctions as well that were noted and scored, and you can see in the tab sheet hopefully. And then the last phase, once we, once we got down to a shortlist, we brought the last two, last three participants in for a face-to-face presentation demonstration where we really got into the weeds with them. And at that point, once that, once you get to that point, then we plug in cost. Cost matters, but for an acquisition of this nature, understanding what you're purchasing matters as well. So the non-cost alone was definitely evaluated. And again, as a facilitator, I think it's important to note that, as I was listening to these, this committee talk about this thing, it became apparent to me, and I think it's important to note that this is an important piece of a larger puzzle that we already have in place. When you look at the badge access, you look at the camera system, the increased involvement with Sheriff Freeman and school resource officers, social workers, and early intervention, that this is an important piece that I think helps close a lot of loops. So it's more than just meeting a law. I think it's, I think we're fulfilling a bigger picture of not just meeting the letter of the law, but the spirit and intent behind it. So with that said, I've got Mike and Steve with us. We can ask, answer any questions that you would have.
Well, first, thank you, guys. I know that, you know, just for, because the name is a little bit unclear, but just so the community's aware, those watching, this is, this is the panic alert system, the teacher worn panic alert button that became a requirement for school systems to implement after this last legislative session. So I know you guys have been working on this for a very long time, well before the tragedy in Barrow County. Several of us visited some of the schools where we were piloting different programs. And I just really want to thank you guys, because I know even the scoring process is probably the most robust one I've ever seen. You guys really put a lot into this. So and you know, surprisingly financially, it performed significantly better than we expected.
I just, I appreciate the patience that you've had in this. I know when you have a crisis like we saw happen, a lot of leaders would knee-jerk react and just go for the quickest thing out there. We wanted to get this right. You all wanted to get it right, and we took our time. And I think absolutely the committee got it right. So I commend and thank both groups.
And along those lines, what is the timeline for implementation after approval?
We would begin, as soon as we finalize the contract, which we're almost there, basically immediately, we have assurances from them that we will have no problems meeting the timelines that are in place, that we will be a priority for them. And you know, and to that end, I didn't mention it, but Centegix was the highest scoring offer that we received. And that would be, that is our recommendation tonight, based on the, based on the evaluation.
I think it's important, something Brad, you said, and this is, this is a tool, right? This is one tool in a large ecosystem of things that we have in place for school safety. And that, and I appreciate what I've, what I read is, we found what works for Forsyth County, you know, and you all took time to really look at, you know, the unique needs we have, and really what works for Forsyth County schools. And I think that is important that, you know, you took in, you know, I know you all, and you took into account what the teachers needed, what administrators needed, you know, just the whole picture. And so I want to, I want to thank y'all for that. And I think our community should know, right, that we really took time and, you know, to figure out what works best for us.
Thank you. It is the mobile badge, but it also includes colored strobes for, you know, that help in those times of, in those situations. Also, is very important for the ADA community and to be compliant and be aware of that. There'll be strobes in just about every room and just about every, in every building, in addition to every staff member having, having the wearable badge. It connects also, it connects with the Sheriff's Department, but also connects internally to Todd Shirley's group.
I just had a question about the rollout of the timeline. You said it will start immediately. Will teachers start being trained, I guess, to use that, before the end of the school year? Or will that be something like in post and pre-planning that you'll, will set the stage for next year?
We're not completely sure how that looks yet. Most likely, the rollout will include some training this year, and with a refresh when they come back. You know, the challenge is, if you train solely before you break for summer, there may be the need. But if you try to do it all right before school comes back, I believe the intent is to do as much training as possible before we break for school. And then with refreshing, of course, we'll have new staff coming in that we'll need to add, and we'll have to work it back into our new hire program as well.
So the law requires that we have this operating by July of next year, 2026. So do we have contractual assurances from this vendor that they'll have it done by then?
We do.
Any other questions?
My only comment was going to be, and we had some discussion, Chris, you and I did, about the procurement process itself. This is a great example of that in action. But I think at a time in the, in the near future, maybe, maybe at the start of the year, I think we talked about maybe having Brad just kind of walk the community through as a presentation. Is that correct? Okay, so, that'd be great.
With that being said, it would be, unless there's any other questions, I don't mean to jump that. It would be my recommendation to award RFP 2513 to Centegix as presented.
Okay, I recommend for approval, the purchase of the Centegix program.
Did we do the motions?
No, you could ask for us. Ask for the motion.
I'll take care of it this time. All right. Is there a motion to adopt action item E, P2513, system wide safety notification?
Make a motion to drop, to adopt P2513, system wide safety notification system as presented.
I'll side get that.
Motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Mr. McCall. I think we've had our discussion. So all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up, action items F and G with Mr. Larry Hamel. So these two items are a pair of board resolutions authorizing refunding bonds. The first one is action item F, bond resolution for Forsyth County Schools' general obligation refunding bonds.
Can we have Dr. Low read that for us?
Dr. Low, would you mind coming up to, read this for us?
Tonight, we have Gabe from Raymond James, who was the person that helped us organize and do the refunding bond issues for both the 2016, the PFA 2016 bonds. I'll let him talk to what's going on in terms of that, because he knows it better than I do. Sure. Sure. I happy, happy to do so and appreciate, enjoyed working with you over this process. And it was good speaking with you last week. So I know we went into a lot of detail about the plan of finance and refinancing both the 2016 general obligation bonds, and then the 2016 Forsyth County Public Facilities Authority bonds to just save money. We're not increasing the final maturity. We're just, and to make this very simple, we're doing the exact same thing, but I had estimates the time. I think I mentioned that was going to dress rehearsal, and our plan today was to go to market and lock in actual rates and have an underwriting commitment, which we have for you tonight. So in the short of it, we're doing a little over $200,000 better in present value savings than we discussed a week ago. So the combination of the two issues will, will, will save you almost $6 million over the life of the bonds. So just to hit the highlights, the 2000, the 2025 GO bond issue that's refunded, the 16s is going to save you 4.966 million net present value. And the PFA bonds is, it's much smaller, but about 356,000. But still, while doing a bond issue, money's money. And I think we kind of took the approach of like, let's just do it while we're in the market. It was two separate issues. You know, I'd like to say, and I know I emphasized, the one thing I am going to recap from last week was, you know, we went back to the rating agencies, both Moody's and S&amp;P, the main two rating agencies, and the AAA from both is, is just, you know, the best you can get. So we didn't have anybody questioning the credit of the bonds. You know, everybody loves Forsyth Schools credit. We did have a little bit of pushback on the prices. We did go out very aggressive, you know, low interest rates to try to get you a good price. And you know, a lot of these buyers are very sensitive. And if we had raised it, you know, 10 basis points, you know, we probably would have been 10 times oversubscribed. But we wanted to go in strong. We did get all of the 2000, the GO bond issue sold, the larger one, the 49.65 that that was sold, and we kept the original price in. The smaller one, we had some wooded shop. I know Larry and I were talking earlier, you know, we had the first maturity, but no orders for the rest. But we did, at a very small concession that didn't have much impact on the savings of, you know, $6,000. Maybe we, we agreed to underwrite our firm, which, which basically means it's our problem, not the school district's problem. So we, we have a firm commitment on those. I know we've sold at least one, but one of the maturities, but it's a firm deal. I'm not going to go into the whole book. I do have a printout, but does anybody have any, like, questions they want to get from the issue? And to the, Gabe's point, I just want to point out that the, right now, we're looking at.
Saving per year.
Yeah, we're looking at about 700 and 70,000, 780,000 dollars per year for the next five years for savings that we won't have to worry about collecting when we make these refunding bond issue payments. And then another 80 on the smaller ones, about, you know, close to 880 total per year. So.
And that, again, for how many more years?
Five more years.
So five more years at about $100,000 a year in savings.
No, no, 800.
$800,000 a year in savings.
870,000 dollars a year.
Yeah, the, the GO final maturity is 2033, and the PFA is 2031. So, so, very similar to last week, just a little bit better, to sum it up.
All right. And one other person I'd like to introduce is Ken Pollak. Ken, if you come up, please. Ken's been the legal person that not only helped us with SPOS, which I want to say, we appreciate all the hard work he did on that, but he's also been helping us with the refunding bond issue. And Ken has some paperwork for you later as a consulting prize for you to sign off on, and make sure all this is legal as we go forward. So there's anything else you want to add, Ken?
No, I'll just add that it's been a pleasure working with y'all again. I've worked with y'all on many prior transactions. And what you have tonight, I think, is the first time that I've ever encountered this. You're, you priced two separate transactions together on the same day. And, you know, as Gabe said, one is much larger, the GO bonds, but then the smaller one through the Forsyth County Public Facilities Authority is actually, from a legal standpoint, a little more complicated because you're, you are asking another governmental entity to issue bonds on behalf of the school board. And we just came, Gabe and I just came from their meeting, and they authorized the issuance of the bonds. And under the, what's on the screen right now, the authorizing resolution that y'all are being asked to consider is to approve an intergovernmental contract with the Forsyth County Public Facilities Authority, under which the school district agrees to pay the debt service on the bonds. So those are not your bonds, they're the PFA bonds, but y'all are committing to repay those bonds, which is the exact same arrangement that you had before, that you're now refinancing, but basically into the same legal structure. The, the GO bonds is a separate bond resolution where y'all are the issuer of the bonds. And again, it's And again, it's basically just replacing the prior bonds that were issued so that all of the payments through the maturity of two thousand thirty-three, every payment will be lower than it was before, as Gabe laid out. So the two resolutions are, are authorizing both of these transactions, authorizing, um, the chairman to sign all of the related documents and for the school district to take all the further steps that are necessary to close the transaction. We're going to go into the court proceeding, which is called the bond validation, um, that presents the documents to the court, allows anybody from the public to come and, and appear at the court hearing that will be held in a couple of weeks. And, um, assuming that that goes smoothly, which we have no reason to think that it wouldn't, the court will approve the issuance of the bonds and then we, within about a week later, will close on the bond tran, both, both bond transactions.
And I just like, again, I'd like to thank them for all the help they had us getting this taken care of and, um, appreciate it, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
And your, and your willingness to underwrite that, to, to, to keep the, you know, what you, what you threw at us last week is great.
We need to make deals work. I mean, that, that's, that's why you hiring underwriters to make these deals work. They're not quite there.
We appreciate it and we appreciate the pro bono work that you're doing for us. Just kidding, Ken. Just kidding. No, we really appreciate your work for this. Thank you.
Well, first of all, this is printed on accident paper, by the way. I just want.
Oh, thank you. I actually put the heavier quality paper.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Second, thank you for the seventy-five documents I have to sign after this. I also appreciate that.
There will be more before the closing.
Thank you. Um, I think this is a win-win. You know, just to be clear, there's no new debt. This is a, a refinance of debt that results in a six million dollar savings to the taxpayer. So I mean, I think this is, it's kind of a no-brainer in that sense. So is there any discussion questions? I know we had a extensive presentation last week. All right. So then we'll move forward with, with adopting these resolutions. First, I'll seek a motion to adopt Action Item F, Bond Resolution for Forsyth County Schools General Obligation Refunding Bonds.
Make a motion to adopt that?
That.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hoy, second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous? And I'll seek a motion to adopt Action Item G, Authorizing Resolution for Forsyth County Public Facilities Authority Reven, Refunding Revenue Bonds.
Make a motion to adopt Action Item G as presented.
Oh, you're not going to say the whole thing, right? Okay. Motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We kept you here to the end thinking that we had some paperwork to do. And now, now I'm starting to think, are you, are you.
Points of information.
Are you going to need to stay for us to do that or?
There's, there's one that Todd Barnes, that works with Raymond James, I have to take back.
That's what I thought. Okay. So I was starting to feel bad we had put you at the end of the agenda, but I'm grateful.
And you're going to get to sign some more stuff before closing after next.
All right. Next on the agenda is points of information. Has everyone received the information? Yes. I believe Mrs. Hoyes has a, a statement she'd like to say for us. Thirty seconds or less, please.
Tonight, we're honored to recognize our retired educators and express our deepest gratitude for their service. Across Georgia, more than a hundred and forty-five thousand retired educators have devoted their time, talent, and hearts to public education. Their influence reaches far beyond the classroom, shaping careers, strengthening families, and enriching our entire community. Here in Forsyth, our retired educators continue to share their wisdom and experience in countless settings, remaining a steady source of insight and support. In recognition of Governor Kemp's proclamation of November second, two thousand twenty-five as Retired Educators Day in Georgia, we proudly honor all retired educators of Forsyth County Schools. On behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you for the lives you've shaped, the futures you've strengthened, and the legacy you've built. We are grateful for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoyes. All right. Next up is public participation on non-agenda items. We have one regular customer, Mr. Jer.
See how many people I can offend today? Okay. Uh, during the last working meeting, two things stood out for me. First, uh, Mr. Usherwood's mention of Family Engagement Month, and second, our social workers talking about how healthy families make healthy children. This focus on the family warms my heart, but before we can begin to focus on families, we need to have families. And I'm afraid that all too often, our secular institutions haven't done a very good job at promoting healthy family formation. This isn't just about the far woke agenda that sterilizes children with hormones or even the general acceptance of homosexual couples who have numerous challenges in forming healthy families and bless those who do manage to navigate those hurdles. But I'm afraid we've neglected our responsibility as Americans in general in talking about how important family formation is. We live in a wonderful era of civilization with modern marvels that even the richest and most powerful people a hundred years ago could not have possessed, no matter how much they wanted to. But the maintenance of this civilization imposes moral obligations on us that we have to take seriously. For men, the primary moral obligation is to build, provide, and protect civilization. Without men willing to take upon this obligation, civilization collapses and falls into decay and barbarism. For women, the primary moral obligation is to bear two-point-one children. While not every woman is able to meet this standard for perfectly understandable reasons, it puts that burden on some other woman to have even more children. Without women willing to take upon their obligation and the missed obligation of others, civilization collapses because we run out of people. Now, I'm not saying that men and women have to be constrained by traditional gender roles and that no woman could ever build, provide, or protect, but no man can ever bear a child. And that makes it ever more important that women understand their moral obligation to civilization. This can definitely seem unfair, especially if we imagine family formation in terms of a zero-sum game that is played by team man and team woman. But the truth is, men and women are on the same side, team family. And it is through cooperation and teamwork that they help each other fulfill all of their moral obligations. So I'd like to ask the board to investigate ways to help promote a culture of healthy family formation for our children, especially those who may not get these important messages from home or church.